L I N, and what was the last?
Christian C U S H I N.
Okay, you're live.
Okay. Let's sit down. We're gonna stand and say what you believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Uh, we're getting an update. What you got?
Let me get my calendar out. Um, we had our, um, uh, L heat meeting last Tuesday, and they wanted to send their thanks to Courtney for getting information and coming and seeking. We also had, uh, interviews for, um, the Point Hills Regional Council as well. We have offered somebody a job. I have a meeting this afternoon, in between this meeting and the party, to find out if she's accepted or if there are any things. So, I'm excited about that. Went to the Mac breakfast on, on Thursday, and that was nice. I, um, hadn't been for a while, so, um, I, uh, enjoyed that. And that was pretty much it. Going to the General's Barbecue this week, and, um, got a couple of meetings. Looking forward to our joint meetings that come in.
Okay. Uh, well, I didn't have much this week. Uh, I had, well, went to the Mac breakfast. Yeah, that was nice. I do not have a book at work for you.
Oh, yeah. Keith wanted books. I told him I wanted a book report.
Oh, you wanted a book report?
I didn't have time.
You didn't follow through?
No.
Let's see what else. Oh, we got, um, so far, I know one person invested in the, uh, National Defense Plan Commission. I haven't talked to Troy to see whether he's picked up anymore.
The one that emailed you. Yeah, I was gonna, I was CC'd on that too.
Yeah, so I got back to her. And so, it's her husband that's interested.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um...
I think you'll be good.
Been dealing with some other questions from citizens and trying to help them out. Let's see. Pretty light week, really. Oh, yeah. So, I think all three of us were gonna attend the barbecue, correct?
I think so.
So, it's third by one.
Wednesday night. On post, on post at the Riley Center.
And the Secretary of the Army will be there too. So...
What's on?
Six o'clock. Other than that, that's, I don't have a whole lot more.
Well, I just saw the agenda, um, for the meeting tonight. I don't know if you saw it or not. I'm trying to get it on, but, um... I don't know if you saw it or not.
He, he did. It was sent to him.
Oh.
On email when it was sent to me.
Okay.
So, I forwarded it on.
Oh, you forwarded it. Okay. I knew I got it. I just didn't know who it got from.
And I've also asked Betsy and Tammy, what does that could be later night? And I go to three.
But I was, I thought that we were gonna... Oh, I guess we're talking about, um, uh, fellowships with, uh...
Inter locals.
Inter locals, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think that'll be a good discussion and hopefully clear the air on some things.
Yeah, I talked to Betsy about that. Betsy, you got anything you wanna share? Any updated scores?
I'm sorry. Um, I did want to, um... Have you guys had any meetings for the redistricting yet, or...
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Awesome. And then, um, I had a couple of inquiries about, uh, when we think we're gonna have the, um, tax sale. Uh, I told them next year, but I didn't know when we planned on it.
I think the, uh, generally start them in the fall and then in the spring is the timeline that most people seem to follow.
So, it's not gonna be till 2025 now, or 2024?
No, it's next spring.
Oh, okay.
Like, spring.
Oh, you start it now, and then it'll be in the spring?
Because you have to get everybody served and...
Sure. Yeah, I knew it was a long process. That's why I told them. I figured it would be fall, but, um, just because I knew it was a long process, but...
I, I hope. Usually you start them in September, right?
Okay. Okay, good. Well, I think that'll be good.
I think we're gonna have a meeting. I talked to, um, Mr. Lilly and Ms. Childs and, uh, Ms. Diane, and, uh, we were gonna have a meeting to kind of start the process altogether.
Okay.
And so, I think, I hope that maybe after this sale, then that should...
Awesome, awesome. And then, maybe after this sale, we can maybe look at if we can get rid of these properties and then maybe start having on a regular basis, maybe go through that, going through that, um, company? So, it's a little less work for you. I don't know what you think about that, but...
I just, I try, but I just felt like I needed to do one.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, I'd understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you understand what you need to do.
Oh, no. And you might have to maybe do a couple of things.
Right.
Because I know there's a lot of, um...
But I just didn't wanna bid something that I didn't understand.
Yeah. No, I, I totally, I totally get that.
And will Lisa's helping you some of that?
I hope she will. I'm sure she will.
I hope she will.
I'm sure she will. What, there's something else I wanted to ask about? What did you just talk about? Oh, um... I can't remember the, um, the bill's number. I was reading it this weekend, but, uh...
L A V T R?
No. The one about the disabled veterans. My concern is we need to find out how much that is going to cost. Talked to Leavenworth, and they estimated theirs is between $3 and $4 million. And...
Oh, small.
Yeah. And so, um, I am all for helping our veterans, but I also have to worry about other disabled people that are in, in our community too. Because it was saying that it is 30% to 40%, they get $3,000 off of there. And then, it goes all the way up to 70%, and after 70, it's a full exemption on any taxes that they have.
Is it based on the income, or what's it?
No, it's not based on the income, which I would totally, if it was based on their income. People can't work. Yes, we need to help them out. But, you know, if somebody is making $100,000 at their house, at their new job, and they're 50% disabled through the, the, um...
Good on this.
Yeah.
Oh, how much percent? Oh, oh.
Yeah. Yeah, like, I will tell you, he has a percentage. I don't know what it is, but...
Yeah.
And, and I'm all for helping our veterans. I, my dad's a veteran. He's a disabled veteran and, and, but... I also have to worry about other disabled people who don't have that option to do that, because if we take taxes away from 5,000 people here, we have to raise them for 20,000 people, or 60, or 35,000. So... So, that's just something we need to, to... Because we need to figure out, and I'll talk about it at our, our department head meeting, is trying to figure out, how do we figure out what the impact it will be for our community? Because that's something that needs to...
When does it become effective?
It's not, they, they voted on it last year, and it did not pass. But, um, talking to the Association of Counties and other, um... Because it only affects, I think, seven, seven counties in the, in the state because of, you know, Riley County and, and Gary County for Fort Riley, but then Leavenworth. I don't know if everything's all in Leavenworth, but Sidewood County, it, it affects. But if it was between $3 and $4 million for one county, I'm, I, I'm concerned. Because if we have to, even if we have to raise our, our taxes a million, that's gonna be...
Shawnee County and Forbes Field.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's about six or seven counties in the, in the state that... And even in this letter from the budget person from the state is, you know, he asks that, you know, we look at, or that this, that the legislator looks at the impact of each, um, of each county.
And that's, didn't have the one that...
If it was based on income, it would be 100%. I know. I, I would be on this 100%. But I'm just concerned about the people that can't afford it, and then we have to raise people taxes that cannot afford it.
Well, see, that with the Humpstead Tax, disabled have that, but it's based on income.
It is based on income. And it, and it, and it does say, you know, hey, you are, um, able to get that now without this bill. It says that in that letter. And I, and a lot of people might not know that.
No, it doesn't seem like they do.
Yeah.
And they really, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it, taxes are confusing. Trust me, they are. They're confusing.
But I think that's the one that made Bubba's behind.
It is. I just, um, under, um, I believe voted against it, but, um, but it, it did not pass. But they believe that when they bring it again this next legislature, I think that they will get it passed.
Well, on that L A V T R, have you been following all that?
Well, so far, none of the legislators are, are for it.
Well, I know Senator Ombudspole was in our meeting with them, you know? He said it had to be dollars and dollars. And you gotta make sure that you're, uh... You're strictly using it for low property tax.
And, and I can see that. And we, in our discussion that we had on the, the, the KAC Zoom, and, you know, I said, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, but how do we know that, you know, some of these places aren't gonna just bank on those two, those mills, and then, you know, inflate their budget just to say, oh, we're gonna lower it? So, I, you know, I, uh, I think it should be on a year-to-year basis where, hey, don't, don't depend on it, and if you get it, you get it. Because I think it, it would be a, a good relief for our taxpayers, because it's, um, over a half a million dollars. L A V T R for us is 1.9, um, mills for our county. And if you wanna go, if you go on the KAC website, it has a thing specifically on L A V T R, and, and it'll give you every, like, every county to show you how much their, their, uh, impact is.
Now, it's over years ago. Commissioner Ron Wells, he was championing that whole time. He'd go down and testify on that empty, and he calculated how much Riley County had lost and how much Gary County had lost since it went away in '03. And it was asking how.
Well, the state, it's over $3 billion that they, the state owes the counties and the cities.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But I see now that the, the Lincoln municipalities is on board, so... We didn't just drive and shop down the day all day.
She wants me to type for her. Well, Crystal should be here any minute.
There she is.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Crystal Malchos, HR Director. I just have a couple time off notifications.
Nine.
This, it's for me.
Oh.
Alex still says nine.
Well, he probably would.
Alex is not with us today.
But he'd sign it anyway, so... Um, just an update. As you're aware, we did post on Facebook about the closing Thursday afternoon due to the water, uh, issue.
I forgot to mention all that.
Oh. And per Commissioner Asher, uh, it was thoughtful in that they realized that we didn't have access to bathrooms or water. So, we discussed it and sent, uh, people home. We closed at noon, which was good because the toilet issue was an issue. I mean, the last time we had that issue, we could go over to Emergency Management or Public Works, but theirs wasn't working either. So, I could not imagine everybody staying here trying to not go to the bathroom throughout the afternoon. So, they will receive admin leave, um, if, if they were sent home. Some people stayed a little bit longer to do some additional work, so they'll just receive less admin leave. And then, we had an issue afterwards with a, a pipe or something in one of the public bathrooms. After the water came back on, I went down to flush the toilets and noticed a lot of water outside the public restroom, so notified building maintenance, so they took care of that. But we haven't had any issues since then that I'm aware of. So, everything seemed to go on just fine, but we'll look at time and just make sure that, that people get admin leave for Thursday afternoon if they were moved to bed leave. Just a reminder, uh, that only the commission or HR and/or HR can approve admin leave. We, uh, just recently had some, uh, discussion with department heads, and that's plural, um, about accurately recording time for their employees. So, to remember that, um, much as we'd like to say, hey, take us the afternoon off with pay and leave them on the clock, we can't do that. We have to accurately report that. Uh, not saying that they can never do that, but we'd have to record it as admin leave if they did that, and that department heads that want to do that should contact the commission and work ahead of time. And the other thing we need to look at is, um, accurate clocking. We had another issue with some employees, uh, or some supervisors, adjusting employees' time. One employee, one supervisor said that, oh, well, they just, uh, clock back in early for lunch. And I said, are they working? Oh, yeah, but they clocked in early. I said, then we have to pay them. Um, we have, whether it's authorized or not, if we know they're working, we have to pay them. And this supervisor was not aware of that, so went back and fixed the time. And, uh, was told, well, I didn't budget for that. I said, then you need to discuss that with your employee and say, you cannot clock in early for lunch. This is what I have budgeted. This is what I'm paying.
Unless they're gonna make, let her leave early or...
Right. For this department, it's difficult.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So, um, so I said, and if they continue it, then you write them up. You let them know that this is not budgeted, that they've been told, and to handle it that way. Because we did, we have to pay them. If they're working, we have to. Whether they, if it's authorized, unauthorized. If it's unauthorized, you write them up. So... And that's about all I have for now. The update is that we will be at the Justin City Expo tomorrow evening. Courtney, I said that her and Dana will be attending as well. I'll be there. Somebody from the Sheriff's Office will be there. Health Department will be there also. So, we should have really good representation tomorrow.
Good, awesome.
And then, next week, on Thursday, I will be at, um, Slina. I'll be speaking at the County Treasurers, um, meeting. I'm doing notes of interviewing. And on, uh, Tuesday, it's the Patriots Fair, Patriots Career Fair at the municipal building, and Jennifer will go on behalf of the county. We may also take, uh, somebody from the Sheriff's Office, if they're available, as well. But that should be it for the next couple of weeks. Do you have any questions? A reminder that Monday's a holiday. So, we did have one relatively new hire that said, I don't know when our holidays are. So, we've got it posted in different places, but make sure that all your new hires know that they don't need to come to work on Monday. Except for the Sheriff's Office, of course. Yeah. So, any questions?
No, but thank you for, um, that water issue, you know, from talking to Cory and Gary and Judge Sexton and, I mean, that was, and then I felt more comfortable when you interviewed it. It was the best interview, so...
Yep. But like, like I said last time, we could at least go next door if there was an issue. But, you know, not having a place for customers, citizens to go, for employees to go conveniently...
Is this the same problem they've been having with the water?
I think this was due to the heat.
Oh.
Oh, no.
They were changing about.
Oh, okay.
At 10:00 in the morning. And something went awry, and so...
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I know, well, not too long ago, we had, like, low water pressure for a while down here.
Yeah, that's because they were working on something, and yeah. Yeah, we, that's, we first noticed low water pressure, so we notified or asked, you know, what's going on? And we were told, hey, they're working down there. Okay, no problem. And then all of a sudden, no water. So, you have a little difference between low water pressure and no water. Especially as hot as it was, because, you know, you wanna encourage people to keep drinking water and stuff, but then they have to have a way to...
Yeah.
Get rid of it, so...
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I was gonna tell Cory. Tim Burgron is not available to be here today. Tim, hospital administrator, is not available to be here today.
He's not, huh?
And Kristin Phipps is not gonna be able to be here today.
Kristin won't be here?
No. I just got a mail from her. But she had an emergency. She's running a mill today. Hey, Tammy, come on in. She said Tammy can let them know where I am with my reconciliation.
Kristin?
And the microcyst, she's nowhere else.
She can't be here today.
So, she...
Just one more thing you gotta do.
Okay. Just during my time, I don't need to come on?
No, you don't need to come then.
You can talk C I P as long as you want, because the next one's coming. Okay? Hey, she can give it all out, isn't she?
Well, would we have any, committing any, for our queues on, uh, Thursday, nine, one?
It was Thursday, Thursday.
Or the jail?
It was Wednesday or Thursday.
I think it's Thursday first.
First, that one.
Yeah.
Your specials. Would you give them a list?
Yeah, I have a agenda. Are you doing this for class this year?
No.
I don't have, I don't have a work today, so...
Oh, nice. You can hang out, though. Do you have any questions?
I don't right now.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
It's kinda warm in here. No? Well, I knew you wouldn't be warm. It says it's 78 in here.
Ugh, feels wonderful.
Whatever. Drop of a rainstorm. I know. That's why I say it's a terrarium in that.
Yeah, that's...
Office across.
Damn, you're saving money by not running there.
I know, I'm coming.
Other people don't stay as long either.
Yeah. That's probably the plan. Hello, Lance.
What, hello?
How are ya?
Good, good.
Still getting our boars in.
Yep.
He's really, really bad.
There she is.
There she is.
Come on up, yeah. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Nice to see you.
Good to be here.
Heard you were under the weather here all night.
I'm still dealing with it. So, yeah. I am supposed to have a consultation on Wednesday to see if I need surgery. And if that doesn't work, then they'll have to do some more tests, so. It's not life threatening, it's just inconvenient.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm here to visit about the lease for our SNAP Ed office. We have been over there since 2018 and the reason that location is ideal, first of all, is its proximity to our main office. We don't have room for the supplies that we have and for our staff members. And so in 2018, the space where we're at now was empty and and we visited with the county commissioners and so we've been there since then. The other reason it's helpful is because it has a partial kitchen. And so when we're doing our preparations for our nutrition lessons, we've got a sink that we can do dishes in, we've got countertop that we can do our prep work at, and we are not afforded that kind of access in the conference room of our current office.
Can you explain what SNAP, SNAP is?
I certainly can. So SNAP education is the education piece of the supplemental nutrition assistance program. For many people of my age, that was what we call food stamps. And so in the early nineties, Kansas, Kansas State University was able to secure the federal grant money that's channeled through DCF to be able to implement the SNAP Ed program across the state in counties that need, we're having that need. So there are about eighty-five nutrition educators across the state that are in various counties and Gary County. When I first came in 2013, we had a four-tenths time nutrition educator that was overwhelmed. And by the first year, we got him up to eight-tenths time. And by this end of the second year, I was able to secure funding for two full-time nutrition educators.
Very much needed.
Yes, it is.
Great program. I don't see any reason why we should not continue with the lease there. I think it is convenient place for you to have it and it is perfect setup with having that kitchen there. But you have new neighbors now, I don't know, they're a little shady.
They might be, but I'm sure that they'll tell us where we need to be. They can help locate us.
And they don't carry guns now.
They can help us locate ourselves if we get lost.
Right, right.
The question that I believe I posed was, first of all, if you're comfortable with it staying at the same lease amount per month. So if you're okay with that, that would be great because I did not, I did not budget for more than that when I had to put my submission in in April, but.
Well, I think that's what we had a budget in, in our budget as well, right? So do you prefer that we just bill you monthly or do you just wanna pay once a year? Or what works best for you?
Either way is fine, whatever works best for you. At this point, we've been creating our own invoices to make sure we have the paperwork in place.
Right, and that's what I wonder, since there was the hiccup where you said you'd pay two years in a row, I thought maybe if we...
The annual would work fine, that way it's less paperwork for you all, if that's okay, and less paperwork for us as well. And then we would just... The allocation comes through in October and ideally that billing would come in October. If that works for you?
Yes, if I have your list.
That's what I'm requesting, yes. And how much does it cost? It's eighteen hundred annually.
But we can just bill you in October for what fully time has it?
Yes, that does work.
And it'll be easier for us as well.
Good.
Yeah, less for both.
Yes.
So you don't have to worry about monthly.
Because it's a annual allocation, I can't do it for the whole five years. I can only do it by the funding year.
Yeah.
So.
And I'll just have the resources and do that, so you can just wait to come home.
That'd be great. I'm kinda guessing it just kinda fell off the radar of of the billing cycle or something like that. Christine is the one that caught that we hadn't taken care of it, I appreciate that. I do too.
Well, I make a mention that we continue on their fifty dollars a month for the SNAP lease.
Second. Uh, remember the settlement, all papers, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much, one more question. I was asked to go ahead and put Gary Commission, the Gary County Commission, as the point of contact. They required a person's name last time, I don't know if they will require it this time. But Charles Steinmetz was the one that was on it last time. If they won't let me just put the commission as a whole, which commission or should I put?
What should you do?
Cause we, and I'm sure he was the chair then and that's my kids' name and so, and we switch every year, so. So I would say Tammy.
Is that okay?
And at that point, we didn't have a finance director, so.
Correct, correct. I had the exact same thought. But I didn't, you know, I didn't wanna presume anything, so.
So this lease will begin this October. Okay, so the first payment will be this October that she needs to extend it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were all on that same page.
Yep, we're all on that same page. So that would be great. Any other questions? Well, we really appreciate your support of the SNAP Ed program and of extension as a whole, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate having that space because trying to do anything in our conference room with no counter space in a one basin sink was pretty overwhelming to try to get anything done. So we appreciate it very much. And we'll try to make good friends with our new neighbors.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep, have a great day.
We expect cookies once a week, though.
We don't do cookies, we do healthy goods, so. We'll do fruits and fresh vegetables.
There you go.
Take care. Bye. Got to take more. Got to take more.
I love broccoli.
And spinach.
Lance, did you have something you wanted to?
Well, I was, I had been hearing that they were wanting access through our office and I wanted to address that.
Why would they have, need access to your office?
Because there's a door that hasn't been used in forever that you come in that locked door and the first door to the right goes to the back side. And it was because they had to go up more steps, it's the same amount of steps. And if that was to happen, we would need another door put inside so they couldn't have access to our office. I heard it from two different people.
I'd not heard they have.
She won.
Yeah, she won. That's a terrible idea, in my opinion. Just, we would spend more money, we've already, when I was building maintenance, we spent a bunch of money in that. They're paying us eighteen hundred dollars. It's, they wanted me to put a range in there with, and we would have to have a commercial hood. And I told them that I would ask Cory, but I didn't think it was gonna be financially responsible for us to do, to go through that, spend fifteen grand at that time for that. Now this door, we'd have to put up another door, move, have a lockable door there. I think we'd spend probably five thousand dollars easily to do that. I am very much opposed and so is Troy, but he was, I don't know if he got subpoenaed, but he was up at District Four and was wanting to come down. I just, we've got so much that we're not done with, actually finally moving. I don't have internet, I can't acc, I have internet, but I can't access my files. The technical difficulties we're still having over there. I would like to iron all of this out before we ever entertain that idea.
In the email, she didn't put anything about that in the email, did she?
Then she talked, Cory brought it up to me. Cory's been over and talked to Troy about it twice and he...
Oh, nobody's ever, I didn't know about it.
Yeah. Has she talked to you about it? Or was Cory the one that talked to you?
Cory talked to me.
I don't know why he wants to do that, it's...
Well, no, I think she was. She may have mentioned that without a parent.
Probably to him.
Oh, so tell them that. They didn't ask us, so it's a moot point now.
Cory has approached him, Cory's been over to our office twice telling, asking Troy, and Troy said no.
Yeah, why would we, I mean, they can go straight in now, I mean.
They're going, yeah. And we don't want...
Why would she wanna go around the back? Cause I...
I mean, he goes right into the backside of their office. But to get out of the weather, to get underneath an awning, I think we would spend too much money to make that happen and we've got too many loose ends to tie up before we attempt something.
Well, I don't think there's no rush on this at all, talking to Cory. Sure not, and the key of that is, is almost like a drug password, you know, is you need to have a secure place for your...
Absolutely.
Well, yeah.
Cause we're so far back there, my lab is on the right, somebody could walk in that door and have access to my lab, to everything that's in it. And then they're halfway to the north end of the building before we know they're there. Half the time, I get there early, early, before Troy gets there. I don't know that he's in the building till he's about ten feet in front of my office door. They could be doing anything, they have access to the cattle room, all the electrical panel.
Yeah, I don't understand why it just can't be the same as one of the drug passwords you have there. I mean, that, that, there's no reason to change anything unless there's a safety issue, which I don't think they're in.
I don't believe it.
Well.
But Cory's...
You guys just keep working on your, your stuff and get your stuff going and moved in and settled in and what's wrong with your internet?
Since all my files are through the health department, the Rural Lakes Files, it's a VPN, security server. Well, we, and then Troy was over here, they put some type of switch in. I could remotely access everything before he put the switch in on Wednesday of last week. Then he got it working from one day, I didn't have it Friday. I have internet, but I cannot access my files, so I can't revise anything. I've got a letter that I'm supposed to revise and send back out, I can't gain access to it cause it's on the server from the health department, it shows my VPN is connected, but I can't, it won't come up.
So he's working on that for you?
I've called Trent twice this morning, I came in Sunday and worked for a little bit, sent a couple of emails, but I couldn't access my files. Can't access them this morning, I've already called them, no response. So I've been working on other things, but I've got two that I need to go in and revise to send out. I need my forms, my real estate transaction inspection form, everything is on that server and I should have access to it, it's been a pain in the butt.
How come you can't just move the files?
Because they'll still need access to them too, files I share with the health department. Being a sanitarian, they have to be able to see these files. So when they work on them or I work on them, it goes...
Well, you don't hear from Trent by the end of the day, let's tell him, one of us has sent an email. Cause I had to ask three times to get the Zoom updated so I could do Zoom on my computer instead of on my phone.
Right, right. And I know he's trying and I know he's busy, but...
No, I know they're busy, but, I mean, that's, that's, I can do my Zoom on my phone, there's another alternative. You need to, you need to have access to do your job, so.
And that's what, that's what we're paying for.
Exactly, so I think it's pretty healthy to sum it to.
All right.
Have you got a lot more equipment to get moved over or get new equipment?
Yeah, well, I can't move my incubator, there's no sense in moving it. We'd have to recalibrate it to be certified. It'll probably be half of the cost of bringing, buying the incubator and it's twenty, I think it's manufactured ninety-eight, twenty-five years old.
Maybe you guys can maybe put in your budget for twenty, twenty-five.
That's what Troy was talking about. So as of right now, I'm still just using the basement and there's, I've got a couple of tables in my, in my incubator for water testing, but other than that, no. But in a case like this, what I may have to do, if it can't get figured out, take my laptop back up to the health department, go back to my old office, plug into my dock and access what I need to try to finish it and then bring it back down here, send it off.
Right.
So that's always a fail, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, let us know how to get along with Trent.
What's that?
Let us know how to get along with Trent today.
Will do, thank you.
Tammy?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Tammy Robinson, Finance Director. Have some things to go through with you and then I think a couple of them may affect future sessions here today, so. One of the things that I wanted to just give you an update on is we did receive the IRS penalty and Ms. Betsy Edwards is working with IRS to determine if we can evade that at all. So as we receive updates on that or determine what we can do with that, we'll let you know.
Thank you, Betsy, for going on that, that still makes me furious that we have a forty thousand dollar penalty.
The next thing is the Schultz contract, so we had talked about this in a previous session and since then, Betsy and I have been following up with each other on the conversation concerning the Schultz construction and the monies that are sitting there being held that we anticipate to be used for the basement doors. And so I went through what we had at the county and then I also, after speaking with Ms. Edwards, looked through the PVC information and Ms. Louisa was able to find that we had paid them a ten thousand dollar deposit for that original E O C building. And so that's actually money that the PVC has paid that is sitting there being held to determine if we can use it towards those funds and it's just the flat ten thousand. That I think Teresa had actually said she thought that's what the amount was that day we were talking about.
I thought it was too.
So, so I wanted to give you that update and we're not any further as far as knowing anything from Schultz on what they'll consider doing. So I think we're still trying to reach out to them to determine if we can move forward with that, so. The next thing was Mr. Cohen reached out to me on Friday last week and he has drafted a letter to Mr. Harris at Acorn to let him know that the one million dollar obligation has been met so that that can all be cleaned up and finalized. He's also going to reach out this week, I'll visit with him and we're gonna discuss our options with those CID funds. That's something that we need Ms. Edwards to have on our plate because we either need to have a project that we can use those dollars towards or we need to shut that money off and we need to do it at the beginning of a quarter. So if we do it now, the soonest we could have it shut off would be January first. And so we would either have to send those monies back at that point or have something we could use it towards. I did talk to him about the water storage out at the Water District Number Four. He believes there is possibly merit to us being able to do that and so that's where I'll be visiting with him this week to see what we can or can't do with those funds. So I'll keep you posted on that. Yeah, there might be enough of a correlation that would allow us to do that since they're being, the water is coming from them, so. But we just need to check and there's probably some questions we have.
So if you, if you want those monies back, then what? It just goes back to the state?
The CID funds?
Yeah.
Yes, if we can't use them, that it would not be our money, so we would have to give it back to the state.
I mean, where's in those funds?
Right, but the thing is, is if we, if we have nothing that we can use them towards, then we, we wanna make sure that we don't just continue down this path and have this money that we've gotta develop later.
There's certain simulations that...
Right.
They can all use for certain things.
For certain things and I think it specifically has to benefit the area where those dollars were originally approved from, which was the Acorns Estates. So that's where, you know, is from a legal aspect, that is best determined by our legal counsel and we'll keep Ms. Edwards involved in that as well since she is our internal legal counsel. Also wanted to let you know that we did finish out the special, specials with the Laurel Canyon. So that information has went to the clerk's office to put that on the tax roll for this upcoming... for this upcoming year. And nine of the 31 of those users did pay that upfront. So we'll have those funds and as soon as we can release those to the bank, we will do that, which I believe is in one year, so. Also, I sent out information to the department heads last week to let them know where we were on the budget. So that everyone was aware at this point, we've got that 1% COLA, the three, the average 3% merit in there. That it is not finalized yet and until we actually have our hearing and then you guys sign off on that budget. I don't want anybody putting the cart before the horse and just assuming that that's automatically approved. Um, we preliminarily approved it at this point, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't be changed until we're completely finalized. So I just wanted to make sure they knew that. I think you guys were on that email that I had let, let them know.
And this might be a person. Okay, so this is new. This is something new with the 1% and then the 3%. The 3% is based on a person's evaluation? Is that correct?
Um, so not everybody's evaluated at the exact same time because it's based on when they were hired. So I do believe that the department head has to make a determination on whether they have met the standards for a raise at the point in time that we apply a raise. So it might not be their formal evaluation, but it would be an evaluation done by the department head on whether they're performing as expected.
I think you need to discuss that at the, the department head meeting. Cause I, I, I think that might be a little confusing since this is new and what, what we expect. That, you know, if you're not performing, you're not going to get that whole 3%. So, um.
I'll mention that to Crystal so she can bring some additional information.
Some people understand. And that goes for the department heads and our elected department heads. Well, I think it goes for all of the department. You know, I mean, we don't evaluate the, the elected officials, but I do think there needs to be a checklist on cooperation and, and timely reports and, and, um, you know, uh, things that, that are, are expected of them to help us do our job better.
Well, and then there is one more criteria to that. So they do have to have been, um, employed prior to July 1st to get that merit increase. So they can still get the COLA, the 1% COLA.
And that they should. So they tell their employees that so they're not hearing, okay, they, they budgeted 4%, not everybody can get that.
Anything else on that? Okay, Jamie and I are also continuing to balance the records so that they, so we have caught up to our daily balancing. But now we're going back through and rechecking to make sure that everything that has been put into the GL is also on the bank side. Um, that will assist us when we are doing our bank reconciliations so that we can determine ahead of time, maybe what we're missing versus trying to do it all at once with the bank reconciliation. So, um, continuing to make progress on there. We did send out reports to the department heads last week in the general fund that gave them their information, their financial information. And Jamie's going to send out the rest of the reports today to the other departments. So they'll be able to start reviewing those and make sure that, uh, if they have any questions, we can address them at that time. The CIP discussion that we have on my timeline, um, I think that was surrounding the interchange dollars and the jail costs. And so I don't know if this is a discussion that, uh, we're going to have at this point. Or if you have anything specific that I need to answer on that, those.
Well, I definitely want to have a discussion. We didn't talk about amounts though.
I thought that was part of the, um, executive session.
I didn't call for any second question.
No, Trish said last week she wanted on the end of this week.
Oh, well, I kind of want to wait because I, I really have all three of us here when we make, that's a big, a big decision.
Alex has not called in.
Oh.
For whatever we need today.
Okay.
If you'd like to attend.
Okay, well, if we want to talk.
Hospital.
That's fine. If you say. I, I just want to tell Leon in case you have something to do. I, I, I don't know if you didn't get the memo, but unfortunately the joint meeting was moved from 11 till 11:30. And, uh.
I'm here.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know. I know you're a busy guy and I didn't know you had to like answer emails or. You can hang out. All right.
It's good, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Trish, just move the thermostat to 12.
Yeah, it was 78.
No, is that okay if you, you need to?
I'm fine with that. I just have my information. If there was any numbers that you were needing or any specific.
I'd, I'd like to put at least 300,000 in, in the CIP for the interchange.
So that'll be a discussion.
Cause there's 500 and some thousand in there? That fund that we were talking about? Well, then we have the three others. So I mean, it could be more, but I'd, I'd like at, at minimum 300,000. Just started off.
Okay, and I think I've sent you all the information on the numbers and the funds, so we can work through that.
Yeah, we did.
And I did miss mentioning this on the Acorn, the information as far as the spreadsheets to outline the documentation showing that we met that one million has been sent to the clerk, to the treasurer and to the appraiser's office, as well as Mr. Cowan's written, um, support showing that we have met that obligation so that we have something official in our records when we put them back on the tax rule. So they'll begin paying taxes, uh, next December, December 2024. So they'll be put on with this next appraisal cycle, assessment cycle.
Did you?
What?
We talked earlier about Chris Ann?
Yeah, that's what's my name.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, I did work with Chris Ann last week, spent a couple of days working on her information on her funds and finished it up last night, sent the rest of her information to her. So, uh, she was having issues with her payroll, trying to get that worked out. And largely that's due to not only because we converted our software, but also because we didn't. We had a manual system with our payroll from January till May. Because we had pay velocity and then we switched to CIC, but we didn't have the financial setup in CIC until May. So everything was very manual. And when you have manual processes, there, there, you're higher, you're subject to more error. And with that, um, a couple of things were coded still in her funds, but not in the correct fund because she has three different funds. So the employee's wages were not, uh, broke out the way that she expected to see them. And so in trying to reconcile the, the payroll register to the GL, we were having some issues. So I went through every line in the financial records, both the clarings and the wages and the employer benefits. And I matched everything up. Um, the only thing that we were off after I went through, and there is one correction that does need to be made, um, which will get her to balance is the, the Kansas unemployment. So that is paid quarterly and because it's paid quarterly and, uh, we were behind on that first quarter again due to the conversion. Um, it didn't show up in her records, but it was showing up in the payroll register. So it was creating a little bit of an issue, but it was very small, $400. That's way less than what she was originally off. There were some things in Amplifund she actually found that she had duplicated, which was also creating problems for her. So once we went through those again and she found those adjustments. Um, her 480 was pretty good on Friday when I talked to her. And then I finished up on 483, which is her juvenile fund last night and I sent the information to her. And so same information I sent to her on 480. So I would expect that once she goes through all of that, she should be okay. And if she has any other questions, I'll work with her to try to make sure that, um, she's good on her side and we're good on our side.
I just want to, and, and I'm not trying to be negative, but I want the public to know this is not because we moved payroll into your office. This is something that happened prior to payroll being in one, in one area, correct?
It was because, well, largely it was because, um, the manual process. So right now everything is automated. So what's running through the system now, which has been since May, which is when we moved payroll. And it, and it would have been happening even if payroll wasn't under me at this point. It would have been automated. And we should see a lot less issues because of that automation. So prior, I would say, and it's not about necessarily where payroll was, it's the fact that we were a manual entry system versus automated. Because when you have manual entries, again, you're much higher risk of having an error in putting all of that information. And, um, just because, largely because of allocation. So some employees work 26% in adults and 74% in juvenile. And so when you're trying to break out those allocation and get your benefits separated by those allocations, again, you're subject to error. And so, um, that's where some of the things were happening. And then also when we started payroll and we were creating a new coding system, because you're all aware that I set up a whole new coding system. Um, some of the things that we set up in the payroll side were set up differently than I would have expected based on our new system, but it wasn't something that was caught until we completely automated because when you're not automated, then it, it isn't affecting your financials. But once you automate, then you're, you see, okay, this is not going to work. We have to make an adjustment. So, so there's been adjustments that have been made. So I don't want to point blame at anybody other than the fact that it was a manual system versus automated, which.
Well, there was, and I know a little bit more because I'm on the correction advisory finance and, and I, I know Chris Ann has been very frustrated for months because of the deferment of manually putting it in and then trying to catch up on putting it in. And I think that's where a lot of this happened. Was when we didn't, we weren't on a regular basis manually putting it in and then we waited until the last minute and that's where mistakes get made. And it has been very stressful for Chris again.
Well, and I mean, it's stressful here too, because conversions are always going to be stressful. Um, you know, there were just, there were several things that were on our plate trying to work through and, and do. And so, uh, we weren't at a point where we would have wanted to be at that time, but we are working to get there now and.
No, I think things have been much better.
There are some things that, yes, payroll didn't get put into her third quarter. And so by putting all of these in the fourth quarter and us having to back, back them up into that third quarter, which she already reconciled has also created issues. It's not impossible to balance. I mean, we're there. It just took a little more effort than she's used to having done in the past. The other thing to keep in mind is the benefits. The benefits have always been outside the accounting. It's been in its own separate fund and those benefits have never truly been reconciled dollar for dollar for each department. And they are now. They have to be. And so in doing that, that also creates a different process for Chris Ann because now not only does she have the wages and she's not just paying us this flat dollar that we put into employee benefit fund, she has to account for those benefits for each one of those employees to the penny for her to balance. And so it does take a little bit more effort. It's not impossible, but it, it is going to be a little bit of an education to readjust what you've previously been doing to what you're doing now. It does make us more accountable and more transparent for every dollar that we're spending for each employee. Um, so, you know, there's, sometimes it creates just a little more work than you would have wanted. But since it's not our money and it's the taxpayer's money, I think it's the right thing for us to continue doing.
I appreciate that, yes.
Does she need approval? For this, on this?
I think she will, but she actually did work with the state on Friday last week and they gave her an extension. So I, she didn't tell me the timeline on there. But since she has 480 reconciled and I'm sure she's breathing much easier now because of that. Um, I, I feel like she should be visiting soon to, to give you any documentation or or getting approval when she, in a short amount of time. I should, would expect to see her here. So that's a lot of information for the morning, but I think that was, there was quite a bit of updating that I needed to provide you this morning. Is there anything else that you need from me prior to, um, either the executive session or the department? I have a note for Crystal. We are going to go ahead and send a list to the sheriff who had requested to know what the wages were for his employees based on the wage study. So, um, we have been working on some things and one of the things was, uh, Chris Ann's stuff that had to be priority at this point. And since the budget is not finalized, we had held off on sending anything to the sheriff, but um, we do have the information and we're hoping to get it to him yet today. And again, we'll send that with the caveat that that is preliminarily approved and still subject to the public hearing outcome. So. So that should be good.
Thank you. And then also because theirs is already built in, right? So how, how was that for like, you have like the pay study and then the 4% or?
So that theirs isn't, and it, there is no, excuse me, there is no additional 4% for them. It's the, just the wage study.
Yeah, so they need to, I mean, when he, if he shares that, then he needs to put that. So nobody's confused and not, you know.
And that was one of the things that, you know, well, I had sent in that email is that the sheriff did the 75% compression and, and where they are based on the market rate is where they will be. There will be no additional adjustment. So until next year.
Sure. Thank you. How you doing, Leon?
Working.
I got loaded.
Are you on?
Yes. I'm not putting it back up to 78 though. No, I put it to 75. That's what Willie thinks our house needs to be. I know. And then I fight. He puts it down, put it up.
You know, we have the different zones here. Last week was that she was right there. It was really hot, even sheep dogs, she was there.
What's the other jet?
Uh, oh, yes. And the guy came in and, you know, he said, huh, one of the units are off. He didn't say that. Yeah, one of them was, that was off. And it's like, oh my, and of course it was 110 that day. But they, they came back the next day and got it going. Oh, well, and they're always cold.
Yeah, we have two units. The upstairs is on a different unit, so we keep that shut off when nobody's there. But when the girls come, they think, you know, they don't have to pay bills, so they put it down 68. I'm like, oh, no, you're not. Boys doing all right?
Still named, honoring.
Well, like your grandpa.
Best thing is like seven hundred yards, 800 feet away.
I know. That's nice. I like that too. Amelia started kindergarten. Amelia, our granddaughter started kindergarten. So Willie's like, did you learn anything on the first day? Did you learn anything? She's like, no. And he was like, well, did you expect to wear anything? She said, well, I thought there would be a pool there and we'd learn swimming.
Jason always says his favorite part of kindergarten is lunchtime.
Jason always says his favorite part of kindergarten is lunchtime.
Yeah, that's what my niece always said too.
So getting his, sad that recess is so short. So we only got to play for a little bit.
Like grandpa, all he wants to do is eat.
He's excited for lunch.
Yeah, hey, that's good.
He, I always, I've always put a note like in Addison's lunchbox every day since she started kindergarten. He can't breathe, you know, he just started kindergarten.
Yeah.
So it'll be like, can someone breathe?
Read this to me.
So it's really cute.
That's funny.
I still do it though, you know, I know he can't read.
Adorable. Yeah, kids are so funny.
And it's only like, what, 7:40, well, 8:00 AM, 3:15 this morning. He's like, let's go to school today? I said, yeah, and he's like, ah, it's so long, so forever. Is it this short or am I worth it?
Yeah, Amelia, she, she, her parents had her at home the whole time she was at the, this was the first like structured and she was exhausted at the end of the day. John.
Easy, easy, that over there, yeah.
Oh, I saw your kindergarten talk to you. Okay.
Well, at least you cooled off a little bit. Yeah, what till this week begin? It's been 10 days of 100 plus the inch. Yeah, it's getting stable, getting to 100 days. Supposed to be leave early, except that nice more parking lot. Yeah, like Susan's, I'm not going to go sit in the heat. So I thought, well, I'll try to sell my text, but so far nobody's buying me. This is the first time I ever tried to put them on that, what, CE or whatever one K states associated with. I'll be surprised seeing what the attendance is for this one. Yeah. I said in the traffic, not the hell of a lot. We're on the, you know, we sit on the east side over there and that six o'clock game's about the worst one this time of year. Cause that sun is just beating right in your face.
If anything else comes up.
I would rather have the, I think the 11 o'clock games for us are better because the sun's more above than right in your face. Oh, no, it's.
Are they sending anybody?
Not going to be much of a bean harvest this year, I don't think.
It says Tim was going to be here, but he's not coming in.
I think the corn, you know, is decent, but we haven't picked anything yet.
Would you stop here?
No, I don't think, Trish just told me you were.
Well, when they get what they call black layers, what they tell me, which is fully, pretty much fully mature. Gramers are still kind of hard.
Well, no, of course, Trish said less because they're going to use their water lines. Close or not. I don't stay in these, if you get a wave, it's a reflection.
Yeah, I don't think that's really a good idea to encourage people. I don't think whether it was, it's turned on.
This is, these people are. Stand by.
You might as well one time, see what it's about.
Well, actually, I don't know how many people are here. There's one, two.
Go in.
Go first one. Yeah, we probably need some more. Yeah, I want to, I want to get. I won't be back at 11:30.
Yeah, I was just curious what happened.
Is it on post?
Actually, I would here. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Glad you're team. Alex isn't with us today.
What's that?
Alex isn't with us today.
Oh, he isn't. I don't even know how many of our group are supposed to be here today, but.
There's two.
Maybe somebody's going to call in, you know? I mean.
Well, Ken didn't forget sometimes.
Well, is he even here?
Well, he may not be here.
That's right. I hope he's saying he's coming back to this meeting. I know he wasn't going to be.
You're, you're in office expense.
He wasn't at the last.
Well, he was at PBC meeting. 17.
That was one of them.
And he was here for that. I thought he said something about being gone.
That's right. He was, weren't they going someplace, some, with their camper or wherever? Or something. Part of me to keep track of him, part of me to keep track of myself.
That's what Susan's.
Yeah.
It's her full-time job.
Yeah. There's, she would know.
Yeah.
Who, who do we have attending or not attending today?
Mike Roth is supposed to be here, so with you, we have a quorum of the PBC. And the only response I got from the board of press keys was Mr. Osborne's.
I think he'd be the other one next.
Oh, I did get one that declined, so.
So no one, no one's calling in there?
I haven't heard from Mr. Mortensen. I texted him this morning, but I haven't heard from him. So don't ask.
I think I'm right, I think.
Mr. Kessler said he could be available.
He was going to be at the last meeting, which I was.
Oh, right. Well, I don't think we're going to need probably no official action anyway, but.
Also, these are the same that we had at the month, except for the name. Can you book her?
I was getting planning to read and see if I have trouble going to sleep or something.
I should have pulled that one up and sleep, I'm asleep before last night.
Yeah. He's coming back.
Yeah.
Look at my tan over there.
Thank you.
You know, I see all of his stuff, I'm so jealous of him.
Where, where were you this last?
Uh, we went to Secrets and Campy. Probably the nicest resort we've been to. Supposed to go for next time, go for an air conference there. Oh, Lake City, I've never been to Salt Lake, but. Trying to get mom moved to town, one of those towns, so. How are they doing? Okay. But already back in Campy last week. Been there for a few days. Just still waiting on this transplant. Kind of a back and forth until that happens, I think. Mom's still stubborn as ever. She, uh, I said, I wasn't feeling well and I approached her and she said, well, I'm going to drive over. And I said, you don't need to be driving. She said, well, I'm already on my way tonight. So you sort of don't need to be texting me.
We need another chair over here. We got, let's see.
It's just us three guys.
Well, we got to give her room for Leon here. He's a brainstormist off. Here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I walked outside this morning and I thought I could keep this weather for quite a while.
I know, for a while. Yesterday, it was a contact. It was hospital. Allow paracone.
Okay. Thanks.
That's it, come on back.
Yes, he said he'd be back at 11:30.
You want, you want to settle at the table?
I'll move up. Is that on, Kevin?
Yes.
Definitely a roof.
That's right.
I looked in my phone and I had the email.
Hold on, sorry, Mr. Rhodes.
Well, it's 11:30. Ken, do you want to, please, or do you want to call your meeting to order or I got you? Nope, sorry.
One job.
One job.
I'll call our PBC portion of the meeting to order. Not family.
Uh, it's Mr. Immelt coming back.
Said he was.
And I thought Preston was joining us today as well.
Oh, Willie's from LA. And we need to call Alex because he's not feeling, he's feeling under the weather, so. Should I talk with Chris on that? Yeah. Sometimes it's hard here. Well, I'd like to apologize for the change. There was some miscommunication and it'll be at eleven o'clock from now on.
Okay. Actually, we're down for you this morning.
Okay, good.
Just ask the question first, okay?
There he is.
We're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting soon.
Can you hear us, Alex?
Can you hear us, Alex?
Good.
Okay. And you said Peter would be here, right?
Yes, he was running up to try to get something related on.
We wanna just cover the financials to start? Or is that, we don't get to do?
I, I think what Preston sent us this last week would be good for him to go over. I thought there were some really good reports in there. And if anybody had any questions, get your thing down here, AR. It's that very last packet that says Friday, July twenty first. The second page has the charts that has the bad debt recovery. And then the flex.
Trying to figure out where I am here.
And then he also has the, uh, twelve month inventory and the financial report. It should be on that, that last one. We saw that twelve month report is on the backside of that. He's like, "You got it?"
Okay. I think July is updated too. I was looking for that one. Yeah, second page. July, we collected forty-five thousand from bad debt collection agencies. Two thousand and about, two twenty-eight thousand of that was from the set off program. Austin Long is our soft collect slash early out vendor, thirty-two thousand. And then the commercial, the company working the commercial accounts. So your non-self pay would be Midland. And it reflected almost forty-one thousand, which is their lowest year to date. So the collections are still paying for Paragon and the IT infrastructure to keep that up. There has been some talk of shutting down Paragon within next month or two. Not sure what we say on that. It's ultimately the county's decision.
Well, I, I, I attended the, um, last, uh, hospital meeting and, uh, they, uh, are very much wanting to shut Paragon down and possibly hire a professional that knows exactly what the norm is for collecting debt like this and dealing with the last of our, our contracts. Um, just somebody in the medical profession. And, um, uh, the motion was made for them. And I told them that nothing was gonna be discussed until we were meeting with you guys. And, um, I've had two that have resigned from the board. Um, and, uh, they feel like they have no say so. I mean, they, I understand why they're feeling that. They can't make a motion like they just did and be able to. They don't have the money. You guys are the ones that are part of the money. So I totally feel how they're feeling and, and get that they feel like they're wasting their time because they have no authority to do anything. Um, and so, um, I just, I, I wanna have a discussion about that because I think it, it is important to do.
I know one of the things, our last meeting, you weren't there, I guess.
Yeah, it was just you two. I mean, there was the, we didn't decide anything, but we did bring that.
But I mean, our last, PBC meeting last Thursday. One of the things I brought up, I don't know if it's feasible to look at trying to have most of it wound down by the end of the year or whether that's a... Maybe, you know, I don't know. That's one thing we brought up.
But without a board, that's an even bigger discussion, correct?
Right.
I mean, what does that look like if we don't?
Well, well, first of all, we're, we're incurring these charges with Paragon because we're bound to do so with our legacy group, Midland Group, executed on twenty-two November, requiring that we maintain the Paragon platform. Uh, that was executed on twenty-two November, two thousand twenty-two. Um, I had been in discussions with Midland Group about getting a waiver from that obligation. So if they would take out the, uh, the requirement that remains in Paragon, then that would allow us to address the lack of compliance with the Kansas Cash Basis Law with Paragon directly and shut it down. Um, I've visited with Jacob Hodge, the Midland Group, and Steve Fredrickson, and they're on standby here. I thought we might give them a call. They are willing to give us a waiver from this agreement so that we can do that. And they also had some comments concerning where we are in the collection cycle. Largely, all our bills are out there to the extent. And that we're just now in an appeal process. Unfortunately, many of those bills are gonna get rejected because they weren't timely issued. Um, a lot of our debt is gonna be uncollectible because we couldn't get the bill out quickly. And, um, so they've got some opinions about just, they're, they're aware of the forty-one thousand dollar result last month. Um, and they've got some opinions about just how much is collectible. And we could get them involved and talk about, uh, we would get them on the phone now. If you had any questions in that. But what we would be doing, um, even if we shut Paragon down in terms of we no longer use their services coming September one, what this week. There, there, Stormont Vale has been able to get a, a database, a report that could be queried in the event there was an appeal. So I, I think, I think that they're willing to do that. And then that would cut down the, cut down the Paragon expense.
But then we also have another issue on who's gonna keep track of all of those accounts receivable coming in, correct?
Well, we still have our...
But he has already made it, uh, he said he did not have the bandwidth to do that along with what he's doing now.
Okay. So again, we might be in a technological rock and hard place situation.
Well, I think even if we have to hire somebody or, or, you know, offer overtime to somebody, um, uh, here as far as keeping track of that, I, I think it would be cheaper than what we're doing now. Or even having somebody that has worked in billing, um, and just contracting them just for what their hours are that they're actually working. Um, I think it would be cheaper than what we're paying now. I mean, I think that's always, I think we would be able to find somebody to do that. I just, I, I, you know, Preston has his job, our finance people have their job. Um, this is an extra duty. I, you know, it may be fifteen hours a month or twenty hours a month, but it's still, you know, we have our finance people are just getting, you know, transitioning to a new department, transitioning to a new software. I just, I, I don't feel that it would be fair to ask them to take that away right now.
That's fine with me.
But I think we could find somebody. That's something that we wanna do as, as the board to do that. I think, I don't, I do not feel it would be a burden to try to do that and just pay somebody directly like that than have, you know, what's going on now.
We're about to have to do that though prior to accepting the waiver to discontinue Paragon.
Well, we can get a waiver on this week. I mean, we, it's just, because we have the ability to pull the switch, doesn't mean we have to pull it.
Okay.
But we'll get the waiver done with Midland. And then...
Yeah, we're, we're at a point where, uh, you know, where we got our, you know, volunteers on both sides of this. And I think we're burning them out with this conversation. Uh, and I'm, and I'm not even sure, you know, because my question has always been, are we making the kind of money that's gonna put a dent in that bond that we thought we were? And if we're not, I think we're at a point, or need to figure out, we're all at a point where we just need to wrap this thing up to be done. Because we don't need to continue spending more money to try to solve a solution or the problem. I should just try to get the problem fixed. But if we're at that point where we need to just cut ties and finish it out and close it all out, I think that's something we need to really be looking at.
Well, that was, that was my point, Alex, on when we had our last meeting. If we can, and I don't even know whether this is feasible, but we're entering the final quarter of the year now. If we could look at something like end of the year, whether that's even feasible or...
Yeah, well, that's, yeah. And, and that's the, the conversation we had last week with Midland. And they, they definitely don't see going into two thousand twenty-four.
Right.
They're, they're winding her up too.
Right.
So this two point five is what we have left? What's our, what's our amount that we possibly collections?
Let's get them on the phone.
What's the...
Okay, call, uh, Jacob at seven oh seven, seven seven one, zero zero five three. Now, I gave you...
Zero zero five three.
Zero zero five three. Now, if they call in, are they gonna bump?
I'm calling them right now.
Okay, and then that could go on speakerphone?
Yeah.
Yes, Jacob?
Hi, Jacob. This is Commissioner Trish Giordano of Erie County. Um, we're calling about the, um, agreement that we have with, uh, GCH.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're in, um...
I, I can hear you, yeah, great.
Okay, good. We're in commission meeting and, um, uh, Peter Rawls here along with all the, the PBC and, and county commissioners.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So Jacob, we were talking last week about, you know, how to, uh, continue to collect without the need to go to Paragon. I briefed them a little bit about the willingness of Midland to accept a, a different type of information setup. Uh, but the, uh, members of Public Building Commission, the Erie County Commission, also had questions about just what you see, uh, left out there that is realistically and efficiently collectible. And I told them that, um, it was my understanding, based on my conversation with you, that most of our bills are out there. Um, and that we're in the process of, um, winding it up or, or going through the appeal process. You, you, I, I'm sure I didn't state this as accurately as you could. And so we thought we'd give you a call at this point and have you give us a brief on what yet lies ahead of us.
Yeah, and one of the things that actually I might, might teach you is, um, I've asked them to dig in into, so when we submit a claim that goes out of Paragon and you're clearing out the assurance, if the claim has been reprocessed by a, by a Paragon, we could actually work, work on that claim out of assurance without having to go back into Paragon. Uh, and Paragon, it's my understanding, is what's really costing the county a lot of money right now. So I've asked for an analysis of all the claims that we've reprocessed through to assurance already. And, uh, last time you did analysis, we saw roughly one point five million would be left as potentially collectible. Right now, what I do know is the top one hundred claims equal about one point four million of that one point five million. And all of those, they don't have been reprocessed. I, the team is collecting more data for me so I can share that analysis back with you this week when I get it on what we think has already been processed through assurance. Uh, but we saw the, the low amount last month. I think this month's going to be low to, though we've had some volatility, uh, with, you know, a couple of months ago it was sixty and it went up to ninety. And my point with that is when we reprocess claims, it takes the payers on average about ninety to a hundred and twenty days to pay it. So if we've already reprocessed them and they're in assurance and we have to do a follow-up with, with work with the payer at that point to get that paid, we wouldn't need Paragon for that process. If my, if I'm correct, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, and, and so I, um, we, we'd like to send a waiver of the, uh, obligation in our contract of twenty-two November to maintain that Paragon. Um, and it, once that's approved, um, I'd like to see us just follow up on the reprocessed bills. Uh, and, and then call it good at the end of the year. You, you see that feasible?
Yeah, I actually agree with that a bit too because, uh, one thing we all learned when we took this over, so this is data we didn't have right away that we got later. But about fifty percent of the claims we took them over had already reached their time of filing limits. So they automatically couldn't be worked. And it's the same thing with the rest of the bucket. So we took over, uh, late January, late January seventeen. Um, essentially, we have anywhere from six months to a hundred and eighty days. I'm sorry, six months to a three hundred and sixty-five day. Uh, depending on the insurance payer, process those claims, can reprocess the payer with hopes of getting paid. So I would expect the bulk of what's going to be collected will happen before end of year. Um, and that's roughly a hundred and twenty days from now. So I'd keep the contract. I wouldn't take any adjustments or write up on your end unless your team knows that it's time to filing, which they're doing on Monday anyways. But for the stuff that we reprocess insurance, I wouldn't touch those until end of year because we can continue working with the payers on those and try to collect it in case that's been reprocessed through assurance. But that's not Paragon. So yes, we'll accept the waiver of shutting down Paragon.
I, I thank you very much for your flexibility in that regard. It's gonna be very helpful to us.
Yes, thank you.
And I, I say, folks, I say that's our plan.
Are we done, Jacob?
You guys having, anybody having questions for Jacob?
So then we wouldn't need any other individual to oversee this to the finish line of the end of the year.
If we get rid of Paragon, we will. Somebody's gotta keep track of the money that's coming in. The money we get from, from Midland has to be accounted for.
So we need our own clearinghouse here too.
But I think it'd be cheaper than forty-five thousand dollars a month.
I mean, what do we feel the availability of that actually is?
As far as...
Like finding someone, I mean... Just, I don't wanna...
Let me break in here real quick.
And, and that's exactly, that's exactly right. I mean, it's your payment posting department that you're not going to want to see go away right away. It's a separate team that you have with your home control currently. Um, I do think they post those payments in Paragon. They wouldn't have to. Um, but you'll wanna look that out with your accounting department because you, you'll wanna collect that money still and process the check.
Okay, so Jacob, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob.
Appreciate your input.
All right.
Take care.
If you can hear the waiver, let me know.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot. It's slippery.
So Preston, you can't do that for us?
Do it, well, I guess another question, do we have anybody in mind that could do this kinda work?
I think that was the trustees pushing the bill overie conversation. And I think it, uh, conversation with two of them over this weekend. I think that was what they were trying to achieve was not paying fifty thousand dollars and trying to get it lower. That way we can still collect those bills, but get to a, have an insight as well.
I mean, this is something like we can hire, um, Potbergen Deal to do or an auditing firm, right? Am I, am I correct?
So Preston, what timeframe, what kind of hours are you looking at that this would take?
To post the payment?
To deal with this.
Uh, I sent...
Yeah, you sent an email. I sent it to... Hold on, I'll get it.
There's only eight to 10.
Um, it says daily 10 to 15, but up to 50 soft, soft collect early out. And then eight to 10 commercial payments per week and then the end of the month, which does not have to be done all in one day, approximately 550.
Accounts.
Accounts to post.
So your Midland is only the eight to 10 commercial payments a week. The, and we would want to sort of review those before they're posted because some of them are coming in with Flint Hills claims too. So we wanna make, still have eyes on those, but the majority of your accounts are gonna be your bad debt collectors, which is not Midland.
So then you would turn over a list of everybody that's outstanding and basically we would just be doing a ledger where we're collecting dollars and that's it. And then we would take the money to the bank, you, take the money to you to take to the bank? Change the bank since?
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest changing the bank right now just because we're getting.
GCH.
Flint Hills and GCH mixed together on commercial payments.
I'm, I'm just trying to, in order for me to say anything about who I think might be able to make this work, I just need to know hours and timeframe that you're looking at, we're just looking at through the end of the year, we're looking at.
Well, your bad debt can be collected for indefinitely. Your Midland is gonna be wrapped up, you know, by first quarter of next year, it sounds like.
So 500-ish accounts that could be for a long time?
Forever, yeah. Depending on who we decide to take the legal action to, because there's a, a lot of accounts that are, someone needs to decide if we're gonna take legal action on those. There's 1,400 of those and depending on whether you get a judgment or not, you could be collecting garnishments for years. If the, if the decision makers decide to do so.
Now, those packets that started coming in were coming a little bit with the encrypted nature of them, so I don't actually have one to show you, but started, I think we received last week from Colorado, an initial packet of proposed litigation.
The one from Hossian Long is almost 1,500 accounts, 3.5 million. But I think we're still waiting on a decision on whether they can give the legal action on that.
So hour-wise, like what are you guys putting in a week to deal with all this?
500 accounts, what would that take you? Two full days maybe?
So 16 to 20 hours?
At the end of the month, but then throughout the week, maybe an hour to two a day, maybe less.
So it's like 10 hours. So probably around 12 to 15 hours average per week, when you count in the hours at the end of the month.
Probably get our school.
What, could it be something where like we have a company do it for the first year because that's where the bulk of the ones and then everything else is gonna probably not be as consistent?
I think it would be better if you have someone that's doing it and they're the ones that remain doing it because the changing back and forth just like we talked about manual processes, you're gonna create more issues and errors and things that are trying to make sure we haven't missed.
But we also don't wanna contact with somebody for five years and still.
Right.
On that on.
Well, so, I mean, that's the thing, I don't think that we can do it in our office, but there might be someone in our office that would be willing to do it outside hours as a contract. It would have to be paid as a separate contract and they're not gonna be paid by the county, it would be paid by PBC. So I would like to at least be able to talk to some of my staff and see if there would be.
And I, and that's what I was thinking about when I was, you know, it could be somebody internal or it could be somebody that, you know, just has experience in accounting, but I'd rather it be somebody internal because then they, you know, know, know the workings of. Yeah. But I also.
But I definitely know we don't have the fan within our office, we'd have to be an additional outside.
Exactly. I mean, regardless, it's gonna be cheaper than what we're doing now.
I mean, I don't wanna see us drag this out. We've done the bond.
Anybody in this room wants it to try to get it?
I mean, I hate to miss potential money, but we also went into this with the understanding that we're here for a reason because of that.
Well, my decision's made and I think when you're looking at collecting debt, what happens if they just say, well, I'm not gonna pay it, you know, is somebody gonna fight again?
Yeah, how much are we gonna pay?
Right, right, that's, you know, that's a better way of putting it, I guess.
Well, that's one of my questions, what you just mentioned, Preston, about is somebody waiting to see if these go to litigation for the one point, whatever million?
Yeah.
And who does that word come from?
It's a good question. I, how sure do the decision makers are, I guess, anymore? And that's, I'm not trying to say that with bad.
I understand, yeah. But there is no alpha, no omega to this thing. Yeah, that would be the Board of Trustees, but you know, we could, we could get an arrangement with the Board to try and hear the frustration expressed to me by Commissioner Giordano. Maybe we need to enter into some relationship with the trustees where we say, thank you for getting us this far, we'll take over from this point on. And then the Geary County Commission would be empowered to make decisions regarding litigation. You know, thank, thank the trustees for their hard work, and say we got it from here. And then that would be the people that would be authorized to make that decision.
So should there be a motion that, or should we wait till the end of the year till this is, Paragon is over?
Paragon's, hey, by the way, Paragon is over as of August 31st, as far as I'm concerned. I'm gonna round out, we wrote them tons of letters, but after later, at the end of the year, all we got was New Jersey talk. So we're gonna, we'll tell them, this is it, we're done, we're not using your services after September 1st. I mean, after August 31st, because I don't wanna go and do that in a month.
Okay.
And then we'll find out, maybe we should meet again next week after you have a chance to visit with your staff about who could catch the, who could receive the payments. And then I could get a proposal out to Leon or, you know, a wind down of trustees along with the waiver. Because what I'm hearing from Commissioner Giordano and I, nothing but absolute respect and good relationship with Leon, but I, I've not heard any of this frustration directly, but I am hearing it indirectly. And, you know, I think if that's the way they feel, then we should make public service be something they don't worry about, we'll get this wound down as quickly as possible.
Well, I appreciate all the hard work, I mean, especially Monica and Leon have been there throughout this whole entire position. And it is frustrating, it's very frustrating and, and part of the frustration is we've never, none of us in this room have ever done this. So, you know, we're gonna make mistakes and we don't know exactly if we're making the right decisions or not, but we're doing, trying to do our, the best we can.
I, I remember when we did the opening day at the, or the ribbon cutting at the hospital, you commanded me on my expletives. I feel the frustration too.
Yes, I know, we all do, and I, I mean, I'm just, I just wait, can't wait till the day this is all over.
Well, it kinda sounds like that, if we got somebody to handle the accounting end, then it's really not gonna be this board either, we can just give reports to the county commission, is it?
Well, I still think that you guys should be involved as far as the, you know, as far, I mean, maybe not coming here, but, you know, at least you know what's going on with the money. I mean, that, that's, I feel like, I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
Well, and that's, you know, I just didn't know what our responsibilities were gonna be in this either.
I'm gonna have, the Board of Trustees is gonna have to sign the check, checking accounts over and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's another thing that'll go away with Paragon is us being able to write checks out of the system. You can write a manual for that.
Okay.
Right now Christine and myself are the only two.
Only two signers.
And I think all three of my board members have already resigned, so.
Okay.
Well, then maybe we should wait until we get that all figured out before we make an official dissolve of the trustees and have everything in ducks in a row.
If you don't have trustees, how's that?
Don't work.
One of the county commission will take.
The county commission will be the trustees then. But you guys still, we still need to cooperate with you guys as far as the money that comes out and what we're doing with the bond.
Right.
If the county decides to have a hospital, they may run it through the Board of Trustees, but it's not a mandatory thing. So the county can continue to carry on some type of a hospital type operation here without Board of Trustees.
I think we need to review the bad debt collection agencies or language regarding Paragon. Because Hossian Long will not track their own balances, they're relying on that feed from Paragon. And there may be some questions they have regarding their contracts. In other words, their contract is tied to Paragon.
Okay, I think he sent me an email and now I understand what you were telling me. I was focusing on the Midland thing. All right.
We're sending files to three out of the four bad debt collection agencies with updated balances. So if Paragon goes away, that's, are you sending Excel files every month? I don't know what that.
That would be also a duty that I, sort of a duty, so we have to have that capability to provide.
Securely, yeah.
Well, I, I think that maybe Preston and Tammy and Peter can look on all the things, the checkbook issue, the documentation of the, the accounts receivable. And then have that presented to us by our next meeting, joint meeting, and then we can decide officially as far as what we're doing with the trustees and how we're gonna go forward now that Paragon is gonna be done. Should we have something in two weeks since Paragon's gonna be pretty much done at Thursday?
Yeah, I, I'd like permission, I'd like my authority to say to Paragon that we're done with them as of August 31st, I'd like to have that.
Do we have the detail of the payable, I mean, of the, do we have all the detail of the receivables and payables out of there?
No, we need some time to make a final copy of Paragon. Stoneville will need some, a few days to make a final copy before we unplug it.
If we have to go another month, I mean, it's.
Well, I'd rather do it right and not.
Yeah, I would too.
Screw something up, so.
That's correct.
Um, do you wanna wait, if we'll make a motion that, we'll make a motion that we don't do it till next month?
I stand for it, I think the rest is fine.
Okay, so what day should we, I mean, I'll make a motion that we're gonna get rid of Paragon and you guys can make one too. What, should we have a date in mind specifically?
Well, if we go past this week, we're gonna have, we're gonna be into another month, so we're gonna hump for another month, is that correct?
I'm not gonna hand it, I mean, I.
Yeah.
It didn't make any difference.
Right.
But you said you can request a waiver from Midland without, we don't have to.
We don't have to pull it.
Do it by, so we could make a motion.
Whenever we make.
To have him proceed with getting the waiver and then we would execute next month in our meeting?
Okay.
Is there, is there a timeframe that we have to notify them? Do we have to have 30 days notice or no?
Okay.
So that would be enough time.
Would you guys wanna do your motion first and then I?
Okay, no, I'm confused here again. I'll make the motion or whatever.
For Peter to get the waiver.
Right, there we go, yeah. I'll make that motion for Peter to get the waiver.
One second. Second, I thought he was still around.
I've been doing a lot of that lately.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I make the same motion.
I say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are we gonna have to have that same waiver with these other companies then?
I'd better put an eyeball on it first. And, but the Midland thing, that's where most of the money is, right, Preston, would you say?
What'd you say, 1.2 million?
1.5 and then 100 of the top contracts is 1.4.
So your bad debt is.
Hello?
Hello.
You got something to say? You wake up?
Dude, it got super quiet. I didn't think I needed to say anything in the moment.
So your bad debt, you got calculated correctly, is around $33 million, but you're only gonna collect maybe 10% of that, but it'll take years.
So at what point do we just throw in the towel?
So I think you'd continually monitor it, how much you're collecting, how much you're paying the individual to update the balances. You know, whatever else, whatever, whatever other costs are involved in collecting the money.
Yeah, I'd like that gap to quickly and for good money after that.
Yeah. I guess I got, maybe this for Tammy, do you have any idea, I don't wanna hold you to anything, but what kind of an hourly rate this would take to hire somebody or?
I'd probably pay at least $25 to $30 an hour, barely.
I just didn't, you know, it's a big enough job, I just didn't know what was, I mean, that doesn't sound out of line to me at all, but.
I mean, and of course it's gonna be, I mean, how, how much, how many, how much qualification a person has. Because if it's somebody with higher qualification, it's maybe more.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
I don't think I would go less than 25 an hour.
It'd be less than what you're paying the Stoneville employees, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as that goes, that seems like that's a very fair range in there, isn't it?
Leon, you good with all this?
Yes. Leon, just want to tell you. Well, I wanna see it finished right.
Right, I think we all do.
Preston, yeah, you're gonna get self-paced on the whatever bank for another 10 years.
Well, that money will be kind of there to cover expenses plus work on bond payment, I assume, if there's money left over, so.
But we're on life for that.
Paying fees and this rawls fees and.
Right.
At some point, that's gonna tip the scale the other way.
Right, yeah.
Or it might be worth everybody's time.
So the assurance he's talking about, I think, is this change healthcare, which is about $10,000 a month. So you'd still have the.
You need the assurance to track it.
That's the clearinghouse he's talking about.
So we got 1.4 million in commercial and insurance and we got 3.3 million, that's your 10% of your 33 million. That starts to give you some ballpark figures about what we're doing.
Yeah, large, huge ballpark.
And 3.3 million, that's a, at least a two-year process. So I think there's, there's, there's a feasibility in having somebody within, associated with the county, watching these things come in and pushing it forward, cut down our expense ratio and, you know, and watch it come in. It, it would be beneficial from the county's point of view and that would be more money coming in than we would put out and therefore it's responsible use of the public money. But we, we should always be looking has, how to streamline and bring this activity to an end soon as possible.
I agree. Again, I appreciate everybody's, well, we just volunteered a part on this.
I don't know, Ray, I was really volunteered for this.
Appreciate you being stuck here.
Well, with that said.
Well, with that said, thanks for everyone coming today. At least we got one thing done.
I think. I think we're on the right track here. It's just how quickly.
Either further along or more there a month or two.
Right, right.
We have a hospital.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We adjourned.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Yeah.
Thanks, Preston.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, is Alex at the seat?
Alex, you staying on the.
Yeah, absolutely. What's the, what's the text?
The sheriff's side.
Hey, guys.
And then the executive session.
Hi, how are you guys?
Nothing else there. Why you?
Hi.
Hi.
Who's that?
Alex on the phone. He doesn't feel good.
You couldn't tell?
It's a voice from above. Yeah.
The outside attacked me. My eyes are swollen. It's, ugh.
I think it's hangover.
Yeah, right.
He got into that special.
Yeah.
Hello, buddy.
Oh, yeah.
Good, how are you, Sheriff?
Good. Do you guys want me to wait for like fifteen? Because I saw a public comment supposed to be before me.
Yeah, but I don't think it was here, so we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, nobody's here. I don't know where, I don't know where he's at. So we just a minute, he went out.
What's that?
We're working on getting your numbers.
Oh, cool. Awesome. Is it real good or?
Well, I mean, you know most of them.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about, okay, I thought you were talking about doing corrections early. Okay.
That should, then you kind of hear and make sure that there's, I know there were several there and we were discussing.
Yeah.
That we might administer.
Okay.
Be fine in the budget anyway, but just want to make sure that we've got them all. They're supposed to be.
Alright, good. Thank you. Your son's still going?
No, I don't have any thoughts on that. I have.
I thought you, I thought you had something going. Oh.
I thought one of them, at least, they want to be some state of, uh, games and have two state championships.
No real one. Yeah.
You're in. I'm ready to remember you guys right now. Good afternoon. This won't take very long. Did you guys have any questions on the financials? No. Okay, I'll just run through what we've been doing. We have Willow. That's one of the only, there's a couple of companies, but they're, you know, they have to come from several states away. Willow does too, that work on our doors because they're old. But we had them in the house last week and they went through all the doors and all the locks. So things are going well there.
Of the cells, right?
The cell, yes.
I just want, just for people at home to know why you're having.
Oh, okay. Yeah, these are the cell doors.
Yeah.
We have received five RFQs from five different engineering firms. So I know that Corey's running with that as far as that committee, which Major Anderson will be a part of the committee. But that's good that we have that many people that are interested. So get some, answer some questions. Our new vehicle and body worn camera systems finally arrived and they are working on the installs right now. So we'll be changing over to those here soon. On our frontline software, I told you guys about that before. That's where we got our early warning system. That's where we log all our complaints and all our compliments and all our chases and all our uses of force. They also have a component for the FTO program, the Field Train Officer Program. Previously, we had somebody else that did that for us and it was five thousand dollars a year. Well, they've added that piece to frontline for two thousand dollars. That's all it costs a year. So it's in the same, you know, you log into one place and then you can either go to FTO or you go to, to the other one. So we're saving some money there. Our evidence vault upgrades that we needed to do to be compliant with Kalia and everything are complete. And we're now installing barcode system. So going forward, all our evidence will be barcoded and it's comprised with what KBI uses. So it's much easier as far as getting our evidence out there, turning it in and getting it back here, associating with the right case. Operationally, we're averaging between three seventy-five and four hundred and fifty incidents and we're running consistently between ninety-five and a hundred and fifteen inmates in the jail, which is, that's post-COVID, that's been the norm. Continuing to partner with community corrections, conducting home visits. Those states have been real good. We've made a few cases out of those as a matter of fact, but I think it's helping, it actually helps with their compliance, knowing that there's going to be law enforcement showing up with, with them.
Yeah, that was modeled after down in Lyon County. It was real successful down there. So I'm glad we're doing that here.
We had a real good training evolution last month with, up at the high school. And what it was, was it was including EMS into the stack with us if, if it was a protracted active shooter type situation where we needed to go through with SWAT after the patrol response. Where we could drop off EMTs and paramedics with a security element to take care of people that we come across that have been injured. So it's, it's happened a couple of times now. Now they really got it down. It's both fire department and us are really happy with where we're at on that right now. So it'll be smooth. God forbid anything like.
Uh huh. I wish we could get the police department in there too.
We invited.
You did?
Yes. So we did.
Thank you.
Stopper specifically. This month, we're doing patrol responses to active shooter at Franklin School. That was more of a, like I said, a protracted incident where SWAT's going to be involved going through because we still got an active shooter somewhere. This one at Franklin School will be patrol response. So what happens when the first guy shows up? The second guy shows up, but what everybody does. And that's really pretty simple because what they do, they just go towards the fire and they don't wait for anybody. And then we've got a large scale felony manhunt training event scheduled in October. It's going to be rural out in the vicinity of Old Highway thirteen. We got our K9s, our SRT, our drone unit. The PD's going to be there with our SWAT team. Gary Burgess is going to be there and this is going to meet his requirement for what, yearly large scale exercise. So he'll use this as that. Fire department will be there, KSPK9s, K, KBI K9s and possibly hostage rescue. So that's going to be a, you know, eight to ten hour event. It'll be a good training event. We're still continuing to turn a corner on manning issues in jail. I just talked to Major Anderson a few minutes ago. He hired three last week and two today. But, so we're gaining ground. It's just not there yet. So we're fully staffed on patrol. And we're still, you know, hitting the recruitment stuff with Eagle Communications on radio and JC Pose. We're still trying to develop a recruitment video. We haven't got that done yet. And we're still using social media for recruitment. And lastly, we're on track for, still on track for March twenty twenty-four Kalia accreditation. We're actually doing mock assessments right now. It's where our accreditation manager works with other people in the Kalia world and will give them access internally to our proof files and they can check it off site. So they do all that until, we will still have a in-person mock at some point before we actually do the, the assessment with Kalia. So. You said that's in March? That's, that's the conference we're shooting for because that means they're going to have to, they'll need to be here. You're talking about a December assessment. Because they like to have like six months because if you don't meet the bar at a couple of places, that gives you some time before, to fix that. So you can still be accredited. So it's a lot of work, but we've made a lot of improvements to our, the way we operate and everything else. It's well, well worth it. It's going to be a great thing. On recruitment, I think Chris, I mentioned this morning about the April job fair, possibly getting, and somebody over there. Yeah, I can't, somebody talked to me about a couple of job fairs and yes, we're all in on all of them.
Yeah, I, I talked to Stopper and I think they're going to do that. I sent him the one for the, the tomorrow. They're going to be down at the park.
Yep, I already know they're planning on that one. So. And, and somebody's got a connection on post now too. So, which should help because it's in process. You know how they get a lot of briefs from the, or out processing more specifically. So they're out processing out and you need to know what opportunities are out there.
Yeah. That's a good, a good place to be. I hadn't heard anything about the sheriff's council. You guys, because I, this constituent asked me about it and I gave him your email, but I didn't know anything.
Well, I'm going to push it, push back out of there again. We just didn't get, you know, I don't want to just pick the ones that put in. I'd rather have a more, more, yes. So we're, it's kind of, we're still working on it. We just got to push it out there again, get more answers.
I gave him your email, so.
That's perfect. Yep. Yeah, if any of you have anybody that, that mentions that they're interested, look, yeah, put them in touch with us. We definitely still want to get that going.
Looking for a volunteer and was interested. I gave her some stuff and she, she said, okay, she's on the, or sheriff's phone would be interesting, so.
Okay, thank you. Short, short sweep.
Thank you.
Yes. You got nine one one coordinating now? Uh, no, that's second, second Wednesday every month. Alright, guys. Have a good week.
Are we doing an executive session now? How many minutes? Fifteen? Make a motion that we go on executive session for fifteen minutes for finance with finance officer and legal counsel.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
And then we'll be done for the day after.